September sixteenth, meeting of the Board of Selectmen, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance. This meeting is being recorded by McCam and broadcast over Verizon and McCam. First item on the agenda is unanticipated. Do the Selectmen have any unanticipated items? Have you not? Nothing? Mr. Norton?
No.
Mr. Fowler?
I'm good.
Anybody from the audience have anything under unanticipated? Okay. Then we'll go to announcements and recognitions. I don't believe I have any announcements myself. Mr. Fowler, do you have a few?
I have a recognition.
You have a recognition.
A recognition. I'd just like to say, thank you to all who participated in the St. Vincent de Paul Society spaghetti dinner on Friday night. Was it Friday? Saturday night. Mr. Norton, Mr. Quell were there along with myself, and about four hundred and thirty of our closest friends. And we had a great spaghetti dinner sponsored by the Olive Garden. They did a fantastic job. And there were a ton of volunteers from the St. Vincent de Paul Society, volunteers from Kohl's. And like I said, Olive Garden donated the food, so it was a huge shot in the arm for them. It was a great event, great time to catch up with a lot of people. I generally only see at those types of things, but so I just, I had a great time and it couldn't be for a better cause. So thank you to all who participated, and I appreciate it.
St. Vincent de Paul's, they're having a road race on a walk.
Is this a challenge? Because I'm in.
You ready to go?
Yeah.
I don't think you can make it.
I don't think you'll be there.
I'm not gonna run.
You're there, I'll be there.
All right, you're in.
Anyone else want to jump on this one?
No?
I've got to work that day.
Oh, Jesus, yeah, sure.
I do, I do. I check this guy.
That's all right.
I know it.
Yeah, fishing today, so you gotta work that.
That's right. Today's fishing day, gotta work.
No problem. All right, you know, we should maybe try to do a pledge thing, do you think? Oh, we probably shouldn't advertise that on TV.
I'll challenge you, pizza essentially located restaurant. The whatever crosses the finish line first.
Well, we're walking.
No, not while we're walking.
No, I was thinking of, you know, getting people to pledge that we could actually make it, because they figured.
Oh, bet against us. Oh, I'll bet against you, sure.
Good, well, we'll work out something. All right, so we have two people that will sign up for that tonight.
All right.
Get in there. Sorry about that, folks. Taking a moment. Any other announcements or recognitions? Mr. Norton?
Mr. Chair. Just wanted to remind people, the Twenty Second Annual Soul Farm Homestead Harvest Fair is this weekend, September twenty-first and twenty-second. On Saturday, it's ten to five, and on Sunday, it's eleven to five. I believe it's seven dollars per person, and children six and under are free. We also have our Bulk Disposal Day at the landfill. It's coming up on September twenty-eighth, seven to three-thirty. You won't need a landfill permit, and they will accept materials such as couches, recliners, sofas, large plastic toys, and chairs. You cannot drop off items that include construction debris, white goods, stoves, refrigerators, televisions, things like that. But a great day to clean out the garage. And then I wanted to remind everyone once again, the next Massasoia State Park cleanup is going to be October nineteenth at eight-thirty in the morning. And we're looking to have a great weather day and a great day cleaning up the park.
Will?
Well, although this is not a town-specific event, it is really meant for the entire county. This past Saturday, I took my children on a two-mile kids' run at Fields Park in Brockton. It was just a great event. So I'm just telling all my friends who have young kids, it's specifically for kids, it's very, very well organized, it's very safe. The entire route is blocked off by the Brockton and Stoughton Police Department. Again, that's Field Park in Brockton, so if you're looking for something for your kids to do that's really fun for them, it's this two-mile kids' run. At the end, they have water and refreshments, and they give out some ribbons. And I know I've seen some other elected officials there, like the district attorney and the county sheriff often support it. So if you've got young kids and you're looking to get them out from in front of the television and get some exercise, every Saturday morning, ten o'clock, Fields Park. Thank you.
I've been on my journeys up and down the highways, the signboards are all saying that it's emergency preparedness time. So I would recommend that you go to any of the websites, type, Google in emergency preparedness, it'll take you to the American Red Cross, FEMA. Be prepared. If you live in a flood zone-prone area, be prepared in case you had to get a go-bags, in case you had to take off quickly. You could have all of your important documentation ready to go. The time to prepare is not when there's three feet of snow outside. The time to prepare is beforehand. We had some tough weather last year a few times, and, you know, a lot of people were terribly inconvenienced, and you just have to be ready, so I recommend you hit those websites and get your plans together and start gathering whatever supplies you might need for the coming winter. You never know what's gonna happen. Okay, any other announcements or recognitions from the audience? All right, I'll entertain a motion for the chairman or his designated to sign the warrants for the week ending nine thirteen.
Mr. Chair.
Mr.?
May I motion that we authorize the chairman or his designated to sign warrants for the week ending nine thirteen thirteen?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Minutes, I think I will do the minutes now, being I skipped over them. There is one correction in the minutes. We just have to add in one line with that correction. Any comments or questions on the minutes for for the September nine meeting? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Second. Motion to approve with corrections. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Your business. Going to vote on a common Victor Laters license for best best pizza for three, East Grove Street. Naim Draz is the applicant. Are you present? Okay, pleasure of the board? Pleasure of the board, motion to approve? Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Vote to approve a one-day all liquor license. This will be for
One World Cuisine Group?
Yep, One World Cuisine Group. Let's see, all alcohol, it's for ten, eleven, thirteen, a one-day license.
Motion to approve?
Second. A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. We have a letter in response to Ralph Holton's property.
Mr. Chair.
Vote to authorize the chairman to sign a response to this letter? Yes, Mr.?
Motion, motion to authorize the chairman to sign the response letter to Ralph Holton?
Second. Motion and a second. Comments or questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do you think you should read this out loud?
Oh, okay.
It's a short.
No big words, I'm all set. "We've received your letter dated September two, two thousand thirteen. It does not resolve or excuse the insufficiencies we raised in our letter of August twentieth, two thousand thirteen. The notice of intent received does not comply with the requirements of Section nine, chapter sixty-one B. Valid notice of intent must be submitted before the town can act on this matter. Very truly yours, Chairman of the Board." Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Vote to recommendations concerning the special town meeting warrant. Do you want to skip over these and go down to the?
No, I think we have time to do these. I would be representing some here from the community.
Okay, we have, we're gonna discuss Articles sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen from the CPA, Community Preservation Act. Article sixteen is to see if the town will vote to appropriate ninety-one thousand fifty dollars from the Historical Resources Reserve of the CPA Fund to fund climate control measures at the Middleborough Historic Museum for preservation of the two museum buildings, historic town records, and artifacts contained in the two buildings. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee or act anything thereunto. Thereon. Yes?
Joe Ruthwitz from the Community Preservation Committee.
Good evening.
This article was submitted by the museum. They do not have any heat or cooling systems in the two buildings that we're looking at. So this will take care of that and also put in historically accurate windows so they can apply for other grants also. They're putting in twenty-six thousand, twenty-nine percent of the amount, and we put in the ninety-one thousand because we don't know if they're going to be coming up with more money. We have another meeting on October second.
So is this, the total that's gonna be used, is it a total of twenty-six thousand and ninety-one thousand, or is it ninety-one thousand?
Ninety-one thousand total.
Total, okay.
Yeah.
But not actually, because they're gonna be giving twenty-six thousand?
Don't mind me. They had to, they didn't have all their figures. We've got some figures, so we added it up to ninety-one thousand, what their request is, plus the twenty-six. But they might have other money. They had mentioned that, so the total project might be more. So we have not voted yet. We have approved the project, but we have to wait till we get the final figures for the October second meeting.
And you will have them for the October second meeting?
Yep. Our second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The CPA is having it on the second so we can vote to support it at town meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Hi, Joe, how are you?
Good.
So it won't be more, but it may be less.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Pledge of the board?
Motion to approve?
Second. How about support?
Support.
Second, okay. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is twenty, yeah, getting ahead of myself, seventeen. To see if the town will vote to appropriate sixty-eight thousand five hundred and nine dollars from the Historic Resources Reserve of the CPA Fund to begin phase two of the town hall, town historic and vital records preservation, which will include establishing a computerized retrieval system and said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee or take any action thereon.
We support this article. The PS trustees may be donating money, so we're also going to be looking at this at our October second meeting. If Allison wants to say anything, this is for all the town departments, pretty much town hall departments, plus the police station and fire station.
All town, all vital town records is basically what we're doing here.
You want to say anything?
Good evening. Allison Ferrera, Town Clerk. This is, what happened was, in fiscal year two thousand thirteen, I proposed a three-phase historic and vital records preservation project for the town of Middleborough. As the keeper of records for the town, the Town Clerk's office is responsible for filing, storage, and preservation of our historic and vital documents dating back to sixteen sixty-nine. The maintenance and preservation of these documents is crucial to the history as well as the future of Middleborough. The current climate control, storage, filing, and preservation system in use is inadequate at best. Documents most in paper form are filed in several different areas and manners. Many are stored in boxes, in basements that are prone to water damage and moisture. The Town Clerk's vault has inadequate climate control as well as storage, all of which puts our historic and vital documents at risk to damage, mold, and deterioration. The goal of this project is to provide adequate climate control, filing, storage, and microfilm and/or digital formatting of our historic and vital records. The climate control and proper storage will assist us in the preservation. A uniform filing system and microfilm digital format will allow our citizens and visitors better accessibility to these documents. What I'm now proposing is phase two of this project, which will consist of contracting a vendor to conduct the following. We would re-box and index records to be retained in accordance with the Massachusetts Records Retention Schedule. Such labor will include creating new boxes, indexing and incorporating approximately five hundred and nine existing standard-sized boxes into the new system, reorganizing all boxes onto new and existing shelving, and reviewing all boxes for microfilm and destruction. The total cost of that portion was fifty thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars, so as you can see, that's the majority of it. Then we're gonna be establishing and maintaining a computerized indexing and retrieval system, as well as procedures for adding and retrieving records to and from storage. This would include an alphabetical listing of records, cross-reference listing by box number, department listings, a destruction schedule, and a records transfer and/or request form to accompany each box forwarded to storage. The total cost of this archival system will be one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and that will be maintained within the Town Clerk's office. Then we would be purchasing twenty-one sections of standard archival shelving, thirteen sections to be installed throughout the bank building basement, eight sections to be installed in the fire department basement, and that would be a total of three hundred and thirty-six standard-sized boxes for them, six hundred and twenty-four standard-sized boxes for the bank building. Total cost, nine thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars. And then lastly, we would be implementing a subject filing system and purging old documents within the Town Clerk's office to organize all active files. This would include defining all archival records which are currently intermingled within the active files. All records would be reviewed and either destroyed if they have surpassed the recommended Massachusetts Records Retention Schedule guidelines or incorporated into the new archival system. Total cost would be seven thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars for this portion. So the entire cost of the project, as Joe mentioned, was sixty-eight thousand five hundred and nine dollars, and now the town manager has agreed to ask the PS trustees graciously for their support in this project. We have had several meetings with the department heads, and everyone is also supportive of the project, and they have put a lot of time and effort into seeing this go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, this is phase two.
This is phase two, yes.
And we want more phases after that.
Correct.
Which will be?
Final phase will include the climate control and the microfilming, digitizing, and scanning of documents.
This is gonna take care of all of the documents you have, or will it be some that you discard for?
We're gonna, this portion that we're going through right now is the largest portion of this three-phase project, and we're hoping to have a lot of destruction. I know in the town of Akushnet, when they went through this system, they disposed of sixteen thousand pounds of paper. So we don't know until we get into, you know, going paper by paper, but this will be, we're looking to anything we don't have to retain based on the Massachusetts Public Records Retention Schedule, we will be putting in for destruction.
Good job.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Numbered? Any questions? Board members? Pleasure of the board?
Motion to support Article seventeen?
Second. A motion, a motion and a second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item eighteen, to see if the, to see if the town will vote to support, to to see if the town will vote to appropriate ten thousand dollars from the Historic Resources Reserve of the Community Preservation Fund to study the Historic Commission, to fund a study by the Historic Commission to determine the overall condition of the estate and the value of conservation restriction and historic preservation restriction on the Oliver Homestead located on Plymouth Street on the Nemasket River. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee or take any action thereon.
Mr. Chairman?
Good evening.
Jane Lopes for, I guess I'm speaking for the Historical Commission. Because, well, no, I'm really not. I'm not speaking for anybody at the moment.
Good that you've got your facts clear here.
This is, this is in the way of sort of an emergency article. There is a process that, I'm chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, and we have established a process for dealing with applications, and there are deadlines, et cetera. But we also allowed for the fact that there might be a situation since this, the Community Preservation Act is designed to protect and preserve open space and do some historic preservation, that there might be situations where we wanted to deal with something right away or as soon as possible, and this is one of those things. Which is why it's in sort of nebulous form at the moment, to some extent. The Historical Commission, I hope, will be sponsoring this article, but the commission doesn't meet until tomorrow night. If the commission votes to support, sponsor this article, it will be requesting money for the, in connection with the Oliver Estate. And that is the eighteenth-century house that's associated with Oliver Mill Park, was built by Judge Oliver for his son, who was married to the governor's daughter, colonial governor's daughter. It's one of the most significant private homes in town. It's currently on the market, along with the land around it, which totals about over fifty acres of land. Well, plus or minus, we're not totally sure exactly how many acres, but it's around fifty acres of land, some of which is on the Nemasket River, and all of which is a colonial estate. And so we would like, as a town, some, a bunch of town officials have gotten together at one time or another and talked about how to preserve this property, to help preserve this property. And it seems that the best thing to do right now is ask for the voters to approve CPA money for a study that would basically do a historic inventory of the house, grounds, and outbuildings. There's a lot of archaeological resources in the area, as well as the house and two major outbuildings. So the study would look at all the property and do an historic and archaeological inventory. It would also hopefully come up with a value for conservation and preservation restrictions on the property. At that point, we would have something that we could possibly come back for more CPA money, go looking for grant money, partner with other agencies, and be able to offer the current owner or prospective owner a deal where they, the purchase price of the property would be reduced by the value of these restrictions. So in other words, a person could buy the house and property at a lower rate, having agreed not to develop the land along the river, having agreed to keep the house as it is, the historic elements of the house, and so forth. Does part of that study that is the historic inventory is estimated at eight to ten thousand dollars, and that's the cost. There's the additional cost of coming up with the value of the restrictions. We haven't established that yet, but I'm thinking it's gonna be a total of about fifteen thousand dollars that we'll be asking for.
Who owns the house now?
The Oliver, descendants of the Oliver family.
That's not the original, that's not the original Oliver Homestead, though?
Not the judge's homestead, no, but it's his son's.
So you want ten thousand, maybe fifteen thousand, or another five thousand later on?
Right, we'll have an exact number for town meeting. The whole amount will be requested at town meeting, and we'll have that amount, that number by then.
Okay, but town meeting can only consider ten thousand.
Can't we amend that on the floor?
Unless the board votes tonight to amend that number, then we can't.
Oh, right, before it gets, well, I would ask you, I would ask you to amend that to fifteen, then.
Well, yeah, Mr. Fowler, go ahead.
So you would ask us to make a motion to support Article eighteen? To vote to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars from the Historic Resources Reserve?
Right.
How much, how much money is available in the Historic Resource Preserve segment of the CPA Fund? the CPA funds?
Um, no, no.
Seventy-two thousand, but we have all the money in general.
Yeah, there's, right now, there's seventy-two thousand set aside specifically for historic preservation, but there's also the balance of the fund, which is over...
Let's see, four hundred and forty-one thousand.
Four hundred and forty-one thousand, any of which could also be used for these projects.
Well, okay, but there's three articles here. There's ninety-one thousand, the money's supposed to come from the Historic Reserve Fund.
No, no, the money, the money comes from, ten, ten percent of the money that comes in every year has to be set aside for those specific areas, open space, historic preservation, and affordable housing, but the balance can be used for any one or all of those areas.
And you can use more than the ten percent that's set aside?
Right, yeah.
So it has to be ten percent that's set aside, but you can spend more or less?
Right, on each one of those areas.
My only concern is, is there a prob, and maybe Charlie, you can weigh in on this, is there a problem in the wording of, of the fund? Should it just say from the CPA fund, not necessarily from the historic?
Oh, I see what you mean.
You know, I don't want somebody getting up saying, wait a minute, you only have seventy-two thousand dollars, you spent ninety-one thousand on the Article sixteen, sixty-eight thousand on Article seventeen, and now you want fifteen thousand, so that's more than the seventy-two.
Well, I think, I think the language relates, we have to specify what category a project comes under, and that, that, I think that language speaks more to the category of the request than, yeah. Because they're really, it's really all one fund, it's just they're, they're segregated so we know there's ten percent, ten percent, ten percent each year.
You and I both know that, but, although, I'm just concerned that the people who are the voters may not understand that it, that it is one piece, and yes, there is a ten percent set aside, but the rest of it can be used, and that's, might have to be made clear, and that might have to be, you might have to speak to that more than just, I think that's what it is. You might have to say, in the law, because, you know, there are certain people that come to the town meeting that can be particular.
Really?
I've heard that, yeah. So, I just don't want to, I don't want to walk into a minefield, you know? I want to be able to be prepared so that...
I see your point, I appreciate that.
We all have our ducks in order.
Yep.
Okay, all right. So, we have, so I think we have to amend this to fifteen thousand and then vote on it?
All right, Mr. Chair. I'd make a motion to support Article eighteen with the change from ten thousand to fifteen thousand dollars, so it'll read to see if the town will vote to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars from the Historic Resources Reserve of the CPA.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Now, Article nineteen, Article number nineteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate one hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred dollars from the Open Space Reserve of the Community Preservation Fund for the Conservation Commission proposal to acquire and preserve the Lion's Head property, which consists of one hundred and three acres on the Nemasket River, and is a, said appropriation is contingent upon Wildlands Trust and land grant funding. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee or take any action thereon.
The total cost for this project is anticipated to be four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, so CPA will be putting in the one fifty-six-six, and I think it's two seventy-eight that Wildlands Fund and the land grant will be putting in. Tricia is here, if she wants to say anymore.
Good evening.
I'm Tricia Cassidy, the conservation agent, for anybody out there that doesn't know. Um, let me just grab, I have the numbers here. So the tot, yeah, the total project cost is four thirty-five. We are requesting, as Ms. Ruthwitz said, one fifty-six-six from the CPA fund. That is thirty-six percent of the total. The actual total is four twenty is what the appraisal was. The extra fifteen thousand dollars is due diligence. That, some of that due diligence is being covered from the land grant, if we get that, survey, title exam. The appraisal was covered by the Wildlands Trust. They applied for funding through the Taunton River Stewardship Program, so that's where that extra money from four twenty to four thirty-five is. So the remaining amount, let me just grab that, is, yeah, it's two hundred and seventy-eight thou, two hundred and seventy-eight, four hundred, from the land grant we're asking. So each town in Massachusetts, when you apply for the land grant, each town has a percentage that they can ask for of their total project, and Middleborough happens to be able to ask for sixty-four percent, which is pretty good. The state comes out with a new list every year, and, you know, so that's what we're allowed. Um, I don't know, did you have any other questions?
So the intent on this is to take this piece of property and keep it in its purest form and...
Yes, it's...
Conservation restrictions and...
Well, the Wildlands Trust would hold the conservation restriction because that's required when you apply for the CPA funds. So they would, we would partner with them, and, and they have stewardship, and they have, you know, people that help with stewardship of the property.
So will, will we be eventually building, like, walking trails out there, or...
It already has walking trails. It's kind of like a turnkey property for passive recreation, for horseback riding, which people already do there. You could even, if you want to go in with a canoe or a kayak, the river's off the property too, so we could have portage there.
So you can go through, take the Nemasket through it? Is it the Nemasket that's through it?
The Nemasket borders the northern part of the property, so...
So this is one of those hidden gems that...
This is exactly what the CPA, why I supported the CPA. This is a fantastic project, especially coupled with the article just before, with preserving all this land on the Nemasket. I mean, I was down there last weekend. It is fantastic out there. I couldn't be happier about this. This is seriously exactly why CPA was a good idea. I mean, it's, we're getting a five hundred thousand dollar piece of property for a hundred, hundred and change. Sign me up for that one.
Right, I mean, that's what CPA is, to kind of, you know, use as a tool. It was never intended to use all of that money to buy one piece of property. You have to partner with others, you know, so...
Yeah, this is, I mean, we got, we have somebody that's putting up two-thirds, basically.
Right.
The Wildlands Trust, I mean, this is fantastic.
Yeah, so it's all contingent on each other. If I don't get the land grant, then this is a moot point, and if I don't get CPA, then, you know, vice versa, so...
Let us know if there's anything we can do to help.
Trying to have all the ducks in a row for it to...
Plenty of ducks on that river.
Be set up.
Not if you are, all right. All right.
Can I just give a quick overview of the four articles? So we have the four articles with the five thousand additional for the Oliver Estate. It totals about three hundred and thirty-one thousand. A hundred and sixty-nine thousand is historic, and the one fifty-six is open space. But we're also getting three hundred and twenty thousand in matching grants or funding, so that's almost one for one. It, it's pretty good odds.
Right. Plus you got thirty-six percent interest, because you, well, on your, from the, from the state kicking in...
Yep, yep.
Of our one percent the state kicks in, thirty-six...
And we're supposed to be getting a big lump sum. We haven't got the exact figure yet, but probably in November we'll have it, additional funding.
So as a savings account, it worked pretty well?
Yeah.
And now we're, with the partnerships done...
Yeah, I think, I think the tot, what we're getting is twenty-seven percent now. So, yeah, that, that's a better interest rate than I get on my savings accounts. So total we've received between the town and the state fundings around a seven hundred thousand altogether, including FY fourteen.
Good. Okay, so we have a motion?
Make a motion to support Article nineteen?
Second.
And we have a second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Article twenty, Conservation Commission.
This is just part two, right? What we just talked about.
What?
This is just part two of what we just talked about, right?
Right.
Article nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, what are we going to...
All, just, all, nice little chain of events, okay.
See if the town of Middleborough will vote to appropriate and authorize the treasurer the approval of the selectman to allow funding of the Community Preservation Act to borrow a sum of four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, according to MGL Chapter forty-four HC, Section HC, for the purpose of purchasing for conservation and passive recreation purposes by eminent domain while negotiating. This is the Lion's Head property. Do you have to read the whole thing? No, thank you.
It said yes.
Your day's coming. So, Article twenty.
Aye.
Okay.
This is just tying both together? Is this...
Right, I think Article twenty is, it was basically the one that you just read, right, with, it's the same thing as the CPA?
I actually read Article nineteen.
Oh, okay, that's what it was.
That was the...
And then twenty is the other, to borrow money?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Nineteen is, is the request.
Come on up to the mic, please.
Okay, thank you. I didn't have this with me.
Nineteen is a request of CPA. Twenty, when, when the Conservation Commission gets involved in purchasing land, you have to do it under the Conservation Commission Act. I think this is where it talks about HC, chapter, you know?
Yeah, right here.
So this is the, the act that specifically gets the Conservation Commission as, as one of the partners to do the purchasing, this is the way you put it.
Yeah, so you...
Too much legalese.
Right, you have to borrow the enti, you have to temporarily borrow the entire amount, and then it gets reimbursed, and that, the land grant is a reimbursable grant, and then obviously the remaining amount would be from the CPA.
Right.
So it's kind of redundant, but, um, you know, that's...
It's the way it has to be done.
That's how it's set up, yeah.
Okay.
I, you know, went through everything, and that's what they suggested, and that was the template, so...
All right.
Except that the article doesn't have the same contingency, contingency as the CPA article for getting receipt of those other funds, and I'm wondering if it shouldn't have that. Otherwise, it reads to me like a pure appropriation, all on the borrowing.
Right.
And I, I think that, you know, gives the wrong impression that it's all town funds going into this, or the remainder of the funds, other than the CPA funds, are going to be all town funds.
Yeah, I'd have to agree. It shouldn't.
So, so the article's fine, we'll just, we'll just, when we get to town meeting, we'll amend the motion. Or actually, we could spend some time working on the article, if you, we have time till Friday, right, Jackie?
No, it could be amended to, to put that line in there.
Yeah, we, we have time, well, let's, and, and I think in the...
Because it was never intended for the town to pay a hundred percent, so, so that, that contingency should be written into it.
All right, we'll, we'll make that change in the, in the article before we...
Jackie, you have something to say, or you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so do we, do we want to discuss what you're going to word in there before we vote on it?
Yeah, we'll use the same contingency as in Article nineteen, where it talks about contingent upon the, the grant funds.
Okay, all right. So we can vote on this with the contingent, contingency in there?
Yeah.
Make a motion to support Article twenty?
Okay.
Second.
With the contingency?
Okay, we have a second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. All right, Article twenty-one, see if the town of Middleborough will vote to raise, borrow, and appropriate one hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred dollars, and that's, this is, again, the Lion's Head property, this is the CPA borrowing fund to be paid back through CPA, with this one hundred and fifty-six?
Correct, correct, yep.
And this does have the restriction on the end?
No, I don't see it, I think we'll have to add to this as well.
You're going to add, make the addendum to this too? Okay, so Article twenty-one will be basically a replication of Article twenty with the, the addendum.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Farley.
Make a motion to support Article twenty-one with the contingency at the end?
Second.
And we have a second. Motion and a second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Wetlands Administration Bylaw. See if the town will vote to adopt the following bylaws, the Wetlands Administration Bylaw. Purpose of the bylaw is to maintain the quality of surface water, the quality and level of the groundwater table, and water recharge areas for existing or potential water supplies, to protect the public health and safety, to protect persons and property against hazards of floods, water inundation, to protect the community against the costs which could be incurred when unsuitable development occurs in wetlands, resource areas, and to provide for the reasonable protection and conservation of certain irreplicable natural features, resources, and amenities for the benefits and welfare of the present and future inhabitants of the town of Middleborough. Now, this, we discussed, was it last year?
Well, this is actually a different bylaw from the one that was issued last year.
Yes, we've, we've resubmitted, Ron Burgess of the Conservation Commission. We've resubmitted. We, we submitted, it was of last, it was last spring, I think, the, the spring town meeting, and we were given, I think it was forty-something questions?
Forty.
Forty-one questions from, you know, town council. It was fairly late to answer all of those. It was, we were pressed for time, we withdrew it ultimately. Steve came in here, defenseless, to appear before you. What we did is, we've gone through, well, I guess maybe I can give you some history and some reason why we even think we want this, okay? In mid-sixty, mid-fifty-seven, fifty-eight, they came up with a Conservation Commission Act. It wasn't until nineteen sixty-two when the town of Middleborough accepted the Conservation Commission Act, and that empowered us, or gives us a purpose of inventorying what the town has to offer and protecting those, those various interests. In that law, it does include wetlands, but it wasn't specifically written for that. It was written for those, those kinds of things that Alan said, you know, those, those things that people can use and, and maybe are unique to this town versus some other towns, so on and so forth. Well, for ten years, we had some people, Perry Little, and Vic Sylvia, and Janet, and a whole bunch of other people that, that were on the commissions back then. They had that luxury of doing that work, okay? Ten years later, nineteen seventy-two, the Wetlands Protection Act was written, and the legislature decided that they'd drop it on these, these people who are volunteering their time, they can take care of that. So, ten years after the Wetlands, I mean, ten years after the Conservation Commission Act, we have the Wetlands Protection Act. That put a lot of duties and strain on what you could do with your time, and what's happened over the years because of the extent of what the Wetland Protection Act has taken, you know, how it's, how the state has decided we would take care of it for them. We don't do it in a way that we want to, it's all, it's a state law, it's black and white. You have to have hearings, you have to have certain types of information, you have... There, there's a tremendous amount of information, um, that, that goes on to do this sort of thing. And, one of the things with that, we make all the decisions, spend all the time, and we can be overruled by the state after the fact. They have a procedure where you do administrative hearings and so on. So, this thing can drag on, and we can, we close a hearing and they can no longer present facts, but when they go to adjudicatory hearings and stuff, more information can come out, more facts and so on. So, um, it kind of takes the authority away from us, although it's home rule, it, it takes it away from us. With, with a bylaw, we get back that home rule authority. In other words, if, if we say no, and we state the reasons, so on and so forth, it is law by our bylaw if we accept, you know, if we have a bylaw. And the state has no authority over that. They have authority over the Wetlands Protection Act, they do not have an authority over town bylaw. So, it gives us more control over those things where we are trying to protect the town. Um, there's, there's plenty of examples of where things have gone wrong when it's taken out of our hands. The other thing is, with the water bylaws or whatever, you, you, we have a twenty-five-foot, uh, that you people, um, have a, have a zone in which you can't do anything.
A buffer?
Right. Everything we have is discretionary, and that's because the scientists said, anything within a hundred feet is bad news. And, but because it was done by a commission with builders and bankers and developers and so on and so forth, the wetland science says a hundred foot, they wrote it up as discretionary because it'll be home rule, so we'll let the towns decide what they can do within that hundred feet. And then you, then you argue it. So, it would give the, an opportunity for this commission to determine where they would relate to set a line as to wetlands. Um, a lot of things like that, okay? The other thing is, um, because there are so many records and what have you involved in this sort of thing, we, we had written up one time a fee schedule. If you have a bylaw, you're allowed to write rules and regulations, and in there you can set fees and what have you. And the reason that tends to be, um, well, there's a real solid reason. An abbreviated notice of, of, of an area of delineation, what they call an ANRAD, that doesn't cost anything. But, there's still the same amount of time and effort on the part of the board. So, if, if Alan was to file an ANRAD with a piece of land in town, you're paying for it, you're paying for it, she's paying for it, anybody who pays taxes is paying for it. Because it's, it's a function that we have to do. It's a state law, but it's a function we have to do. There should be a fee involved in that. Certificates of compliances, it's part of your filing. The state recognizes that they don't pay enough. When you file initially, they give the town, give, hear that, twenty-five dollars off the top. They split the rest, they take the half of, of the balance, and the town gets half of the balance. Those monies do not cover everything that the towns have to do. Nowhere near. You know, if you, sometimes people come in for a, a letter for, because they have a bank closing, and they need some kind of documentation. We have to create that, you know. There's no, no monies involved in that. A request for an extended order of conditions, no, nothing. There, there's just so many things that, that we're involved in, in which, because of the state law, we're doing it. The, the only opportunity that the state gives you is the, because it's a home rule law, by law, they allow you to write a home rule bylaw. And in, and in doing that, they also allow you to write rules and regulations, which allows you to, um, create a situation in which you can get some reimbursement for those functions that, that you're obligated to do under state law, but as a town, you have no control over, until you have a bylaw. So, it gives, it gives the commission the opportunity to take some control of all of those things that, that, that we're tasked to do, both in controlling the results and possibly getting some of the monies in to cover the things that we're obligated to do. So.
Now.
So, that's, that's why we're, we're going there. Um, we got fourteen questions, I think, this time, of which three or four of them are throwaways. They're just a change of word, do this, do that. Steve's taken the time to, uh, capture all the information from the different commissioners who, who made comments, plus he sat and read it and what have you, and he's got a response together for Dan to go over. I don't know whether or not he'll, he'll, uh, be up to the point where he's gonna say that he hasn't got any more questions. Um, I don't understand some of his, his, um, questions with it. Out of the three-hundred-and-fifty-one towns in the state, um, I believe it's a little over, is it two-hundred-six or three-hundred-six?
About two, two-hundred-six.
Two-hundred-and-eight, I'm sorry, there it is. Two-hundred-and-eight, we counted. Two-hundred-and-eight towns have bylaws. And they're all written under the same home rule. Um, ours is modeled on one that's also an inland one, so we don't have the coastal stuff and dunes and estuaries and so on and so forth. Ours is specific for a town that has rivers, some, some wetlands, and so on and so forth, so.
Well, we have to rely on our town attorney because when things happen.
Right, right. Like I said, I don't understand, the, the one we modeled it on has been, been around since the eighties, and it's never been challenged. Um, in any bylaw anyways that the town votes on, still has to go before the state legislature and the Attorney General, and they're not gonna let it through if it's not legal, so. There is a catch, you know?
So, have all of Dan's questions been resolved?
No, I say the letter's written, and it's gotta go over to Dan.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, then he can, uh, you know, if we have to go back and forth with him, hopefully we'll have it all together, um, all the little answers. You know, I mean, words like, should resources be resource areas? They're not difficult. There's only a couple of them in there where he's asked to spell something out that even in the, in the Wetlands Protection Act, it isn't spelled out. It says, see the regulations, and we put the regulation numbers in there, so. If, if, if he wants to start printing the regulations too, the Wetlands Protection Act is very short. The regulations is a book.
That's our government. That's what we have. That's what we're stuck with.
So, hopefully we'll have that together.
So, we need to make sure that all of Dan's comments and questions are resolved and answered in this?
Yeah, and we need to publish this on Friday. So, if you guys could get together with him by Friday, work it out, and give us your final-
Yep. Well, I'm sure Trish can walk this right over tomorrow morning. Or I can throw it under his door tonight before I go home. Oh, it's already gone over to him? Okay. It's, it's gone to him already.
Okay.
So, then this has to be conditioned. This has to be, we can approve-
Condition on approval of the town council, yes.
Resolution of town council questions. Any comments or questions from the board members? Yes, Mr. Fralley?
Yes, sir.
You were talking about the fee schedule, sir, and I, I agree with your comment when it comes to certain, you know, these types of fees, where if somebody files something, they really cause a lot of things to go in motion that can be expensive for, for the taxpayers. So, there should be a fee involved for that particular person. But, uh, when do you plan on ha- you, you mentioned though that there are other fees, and there's a list of fees. When do you plan on publishing those or at least presenting them?
Well, that we'd have to talk over.
That's down the road?
Again, yes.
Okay.
Because you can't write the regu- you can't write rules and regulations until you have a bylaw. Once you have a bylaw, um, in fact, in the bylaw, I think there's a, there's a paragraph in there that says if, you have to do it by a certain time or whatever here. There, I, I can't find it now. Yeah, you can't do regulations unless you have a bylaw. So, so the bylaw is the first thing you have, and then you have the authority or the wherewithal to create the regulations to go along with it.
So, you would get the bylaw, you'd write your rules and regulations-
We'd have to sit down, same thing.
And then after your rules and regulations are done-
Same thing, we'd be doing it in our public meetings.
The Conservation Commission would vote on a fee schedule?
We'd put, yeah, we'd put one together, to, like I say, to cover some of these, these particular items that aren't covered.
But that would be at an open meeting of the Conservation Commission?
Oh, yes.
Where the public would certainly be invited.
Yes, oh, yeah. Anything, everything we do is, you know, is in-
I know that, you know that.
Very scheduled meetings, you know?
But, I wanna make sure everybody else-
Nobody comes and sees us, I mean, you wanna advertise that too? Thursday nights, every other week, but, uh.
Okay. Ma'am, please come to the microphone.
Hey, Ron.
Hi.
Just a couple of questions. What town is your bylaw based on? Name it? Will you have a public hearing on this bylaw?
We've had public hearings. We had one person come.
No, I mean, like, will you advertise that there's going to be a public hearing?
Steve, Steve had a public meeting, invited the world, and one person came in.
One developer showed up.
I didn't know anything about it. I don't think, we didn't publish anything about it.
How was it put out? I know you contacted the world on it.
Wanna speak in the microphone, folks? Because I'll let the folks back on me and then-
Yeah, we, um, we had posted that, I believe, in the spring. Yeah, 'cause, um- It was, I believe, in the newspaper as well, yeah.
Have to go back and look.
Posted through the town clerk, you know, on our site.
And my other question was, uh, could you just explain the differences between the Wetlands Act and this proposed bylaw?
They're basically one and the same, except we adopt the Wetlands Protection Act as a bylaw. Because when you have a hearing, it would be under both the bylaw and the Wetlands Protection Act. It'd be concurrent. The only thing that would be different, like I said, if we set, um, a particular footage, like a twenty-five-foot no-build zone, there is no such thing as a twenty-five-foot no-build zone in the Wetlands Protection Act. Is it, it's all discretionary, right up to the water's edge, for a hundred feet. So, those would be the differences. And when the hearing was done, you would, you would be getting two pieces of paper, or actually one document that covers two, as long as it's written that way. It would be a permit under the bylaw and under the Wetlands Protection Act. That's, that's where that authority comes from. If, under the bylaw, for some reason, we had something that, uh, we felt that we couldn't allow, and we had reasons why we couldn't allow it, we would give a negative. We'd give a determination that, no, you, this can't go forward. Under the Wetlands Protection Act, it may, may be allowable. So, there are those, those areas where the, we have to notify the state that- Yeah, the appeal process changes because it's a bylaw and not, it's not under the state laws. So, you can go to the local courts, et cetera, and go before the judge and say your piece. Under the Wetlands Protection Act, you set, you go into a series of adjudicary hearings. You could go through, I think, three or four, through different levels. It can be talked and put off, and talked and put off for, I don't know how long, up to the, none of the state wants to have the hearings. Under a bylaw, you go before the judge. These are the facts. This is, this was our, this is our take on it, and whoever has, uh, who wants to fight that, they fight it before a judge.
That satisfy you? All set? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Fralley?
I'd make a motion to support Article twenty-six with the Wetlands Administration Bylaw.
Second.
Contingent upon- Approval of town council?
And we have a second? And we have a second. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm fine with the conditional approval on this, but, um, I, I just wanna voice my concern about, uh, the last-minute kind of time crunch this is put under, that town council, you know, was not able to go through and get all the answers. You know, it's not a surprise when the town meeting-
Excuse me. That comment had to do with the last time we submitted? Everything got pushed down to the last minute.
Did you not say earlier that something's gonna be slipped under doors so we can get it?
No, I said I would, but Steve's already emailed it to, to Dan, so he's already got it. I didn't realize he'd given it to him. I thought he was waiting for, to come Thursday night and have the commission vote on the response, but he's, he's done it for us. He, he was the person who was put in charge of putting together this-
Steve Entreska with the Conservation Commission. So, we had sent this draft to Dan Murray in August, in, uh, late August, and we didn't receive comments back from him until September fifth. And then that fell, um, we had a hearing that Thursday, and wanted to get additional comments from members, not realizing that the sixteenth, or that today, that there'd be a board of selectmen hearing where we would go over these articles. So, I had asked that we wait a week to get additional comments from commission members, and so that's why you're now just getting this sort of final version tonight, because we were looking for that, to get it in on Friday, and then we would issue it this, this week, today. So, that's why there's a little bit of a, sort of, last-minute kind of-
We're, we're getting a final version that's conditional upon more information than we're gonna get.
Again, unfortunately, that's how the schedule works, and, you know, Dan Murray's busy. He's got other things in the pipeline as well, so, I mean, he turned it around relatively quick this time. And so, we were just trying to make sure that other commission members who may have had comments, that we could incorporate those as well. Unfortunately, they didn't have any, and so there's that week of time that we've kind of missed. Otherwise, we would've tried to button it up by tonight, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second? Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, now, before we continue on with the reading-
Thank you.
Thank you very much, yes. Sorry about that. Thank you. Good job. Before we continue on with the approval of the rest of the special town meeting warrant articles, several articles are contingent upon a hearing that we have to have. Are, is this an official hearing?
Yeah, this is a hearing. It's our, your layout, road layout hearing.
Bear with me for just a moment. Okay. So, what we're gonna do is we'll have these three road layout hearings, and then, once we resolve and vote on those items, then we'll go back to the warrant articles. Because several of the warrant records are contingent upon our vote on this. So, we have a hearing. A board of selectmen will hold a public hearing in the selectmen's meeting room at the Town Hall, Ten Nickerson Ave, Middleborough, Mass., on Monday, September sixteen, two thousand thirteen, at seven-thirty P.M. To accept the layout of Veronica Lane and all rights and easements in said way in Middleborough, Mass., on such terms as the selectmen shall determine for the purposes of a town way, such property being shown on a plan entitled As-Built Street Acceptance Plan, Veronica Lane, Acorn Ridge Subdivision, Middleborough, Mass., dated February two, nineteen ninety-three, revised August twenty-eight, two thousand thirteen. Two thousand thirteen. We have two two thousand thirteens. Prepared by Michael A. Kloska and Associates. Which plan is on file with the town clerk's office? Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the date and time specified. The hearing is open.
Mr. Chairman, this is one of the ways we've been working on, uh, with the, the planning board that was built a number of years ago but never accepted. The residents came forward to us, um, about a year ago and, uh, asked if we would, um, pursue a similar strategy that we used with River's Edge and Edge Water, which was a betterment process to allow the, the town to actually complete the road and then the residents to pay the town in a betterment over twenty years for that work. And, uh, various residents, including Mr. Schofield, worked closely with us, so we got everything prepared and ready to this point. All the residents have signed the waivers and signed the betterment documents. So, um, you have a memo from the planning board, which tells you that they support, uh, going forward in this way to, to get the road done. So, the recommendation of the staff and the planning board is to, to lay out the road and let it go to town meeting and have town meeting act as well.
We have to sign the bylaws tonight, too?
Yeah. Here, Jackie has it.
Anybody wishing to be heard on this? We're all looking at each other, saying, who's gonna do it?
Let's go first. George Mosley, I had to own some property on, on Wood Street. I thought- I thought there would be neighbors from Veronica Lane here that have a word or two on this. I think the folks on Veronica Lane pay taxes like anyone else. And I don't, I have no objection to this being, Veronica Lane being accepted as a town road. But if you go back to the 1993 plan, some of those lots in Veronica Lane are a puzzle. And when you see something like that, odd, irregular-shaped lots, they're trying to get around something, it could be wetlands or something else. But you wonder what they're trying to gain. But anyway, the residents in Veronica Lane should keep in mind that they have a private road right now. And the betterments, like water and so forth, that come off of Wood Street, and there's a light line going through the property. So they should keep in mind that, once it's accepted as a town road, it's quite possible that someone may buy a house or two on Veronica Circle and then have a private way stem from that. So knowing that, they should keep that in mind. But I don't see, I have no objection to it being accepted as a town road.
Thank you.
Evening. I'm Stephen Schofield. Live at 7 Veronica Lane. Basically, all the residents on the road support this. We were kind of the victims of a developer who never finished our road. And we've, along with the Planning Board, we've come up with a plan. We're going to be paying betterment taxes. And basically, we'd like to see this on the warrant article for the Town Meeting. Thank you.
Well, I applaud your efforts. Putting your, you know, it's easy to say, hey, fix this, but you guys actually stepped up to the plate. You all worked together and with the Planning Board. And getting this done is a good thing.
Thank you.
It's too bad that you got stuck by a contractor.
We're not the only ones.
No, there's several of those in town. And, you know, it's nice to see the people are, you know, everybody's just getting together and they're making it work. And it's a good thing. It's painful, but it's a good thing. So I appreciate your efforts on this.
No, thanks for your support. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any comments from the board? Questions? Any comments from the audience? Questions?
Mr. Chair.
Hearing's closed. Mr. Fralley.
Make a motion that we support the road layout for Veronica Lane and Acorn Ridge subdivision.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Comments or questions?
Actually, you're voting to lay out Veronica Lane.
I'll vote to lay out Veronica Lane and Acorn Ridge subdivision.
Okay.
Make a motion to...
Very good. And that's seconded?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Congratulations. Next one? It's way down here. Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing in the Selectmen's meeting room at the Town Hall, 10 Nickerson Ave., Middleborough, Mass., on September 13th, September 16th, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. to accept the layout of Donna Drive and all rights and easements in said way in Middleborough, Mass., on such terms as the Selectmen shall determine for the purposes of a townway, such property being shown on a plan entitled "Roadway As-Built" in Middleborough, Mass., Donna Estate Subdivision, Donna Drive, dated 7/24/2013, prepared by Azor Land Sciences, Inc. Which plan is on file with the Town Clerk's office? Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the date and time specified. Declare the meeting open. The hearing open. Charlie, would you like to speak on this?
As I see Steve give Jackie the cards, maybe we can first ask, or do we already have the cards on this one? Nope, we haven't. Coming up.
The green cards. What about the green cards?
So, that being done, this subdivision followed a more typical standard path. They have been certified complete by the Planning Board and recommended to be laid out. The road has been built and complies with the standards of the Planning Board and Town of Middleborough subdivision rules and regulations. So, again, the recommendation of the staff and the Planning Board is to vote to lay out Donna Drive.
Okay. Any comments, questions from the audience? Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none? Declare the hearing closed. Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fralley.
Make a motion to approve the road layout, the road plan entitled "Roadway As-Built," Middleborough, Mass., Donna Estate Subdivision, Donna Drive, dated 7/24/2013.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Pretty good. Thank you, sir. And... The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing in the Selectmen's meeting room at the Town Hall, 10 Nickerson Ave., Middleborough, Mass., on Monday, September 16, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. to accept the layout of Tall Oak Drive and all rights and easements in said way as a public way of the Town of Middleborough, Mass., on such terms as the Selectmen shall determine for the purpose of a townway, such property being shown on a plan entitled "As-Built Acceptance Plan, Tall Oak Drive, dated October 21, 1994, and revised on September 8, 1995, by James E. Miller, P.E. Which plan is on file with the Town Clerk's office? Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the date and time specified. Declare the hearing open.
Mr. Chairman, I know we already have the cards on this one. So, again, this is a way that goes back about 20 years, was never accepted. And within the last year, we started working with the residents and the developer, again, to bring it to conclusion. And we agreed on a mutually acceptable punch list that was, I believe, completed recently. And Mr. Peck will speak to that. And the recommendation of the staff and the Planning Board is to lay out Tall Oak Drive.
Christopher Peck, DPW Director. We met in July. Charlie and I did a site walk, just to review the punch list items that needed to be done. Most of them were rebuilding the catch basins, a lot of pavement repair, cutting out sections of the sidewalk to remove some tree roots, fixing up some guard rail, and just overall cleaning up the subdivision altogether. Did several inspections as construction was ongoing. And I do believe, back in the end of August, did inspection. Everything was complete. All the catch basin hoods, which are the gas, or the gas traps that sit inside the catch basins, those were all in place according to the plans. And all work was completed satisfactorily.
So it's all ready to go?
All ready to go.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any comments or any questions from Mr. Peck?
Is this the street over off of Vernon Street?
Yes, it is.
Over in Bridgewater?
Yes.
You can do that?
Still, close there.
All right. We have the green cards on this?
We do.
Any other comments from Mr., or questions from Mr. Peck? No? Any questions or comments from the audience? Comments and questions from the board? Declare the hearing closed. It's a pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fralley.
Make a motion to accept the road layout plan entitled "As-Built Acceptance Plan, Tall Oak Drive, dated October 21, 1994."
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Finally have a street. Okay. Shall we now return back to...
Go to a special town meeting.
Special Town Meeting. There are some of the articles we haven't discussed yet.
There are some that we haven't discussed yet. But basically, you know, this is the warrant. These are not your motions yet. So we have to publish the warrant now in order to meet the requirements of the notice notification. And then we will continue to have you review articles and make your recommendations on them. But we have to publish the warrant. With sufficient time to notify the town.
Okay. So we're just going to approve the special town meeting warrant?
Correct.
With the necessary...
With the modifications you discussed tonight.
Pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Nolton.
I move we approve the special town warrant with the modifications we've made this evening.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? We're going to discuss all the rest of the articles next week.
Next week, you're going to discuss about five or six. And then the 30th will take up all the money articles, because we don't yet have a free cash number upon which much of that activity will be based.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Publish a way.
Mr. Chairman, it just occurred to me that without Mrs. Dalphy here, whether we go ahead and, I don't know how we go ahead and do our goals and establish priorities without her participation, so...
Well, I don't think we should, because it's important to have all five members of the board present.
Yeah, so perhaps that could be done next week?
Unless we want to give her all the stuff that we don't want to do. You could always do that, teach her to be on a...
I don't want to explain to her why we went ahead without her.
Yeah, no, I think we have to.
Well, maybe I'd do it over the phone. Okay. All right. Can we postpone the vote of order of priority of board goals to the next week? Oh, yes.
I just wanted to go back to the previous motion for a minute, if you would.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you tell us which articles you plan to review next week?
Yeah. Twenty-two. Yeah, 22, the zoning article.
23, 30, and 31.
22, 23, 30, and 31. Thank you.
I didn't know you were cheating. I was taking it from memory. Obviously, you know that well, that one, huh? Okay, so you were going to say something else?
No.
You're all done?
All done.
All right. Let's see. Well, actually, you're not all done. Town managers' report?
Yes. Just one item, Mr. Chairman. We received a notification recently from Greg Byelacki, the Secretary of the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development, announcing a roundtable conversation on mentoring and support for entrepreneurship in southeastern Massachusetts. This discussion will take place on Wednesday, September 25th, from 10 to 11:30 a.m. at the Advanced Technology and Manufacturing Center at the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth in Fall River. And I just bring that up because there may be entrepreneurs in Middleborough who'd like to take part in that discussion. And I just thought I'd, you know, mention it tonight and see if anybody out there in the audience would be interested. And I guess from, again, the information is it's at UMass Dartmouth, Fall River, Wednesday, September 25th, from 10 to 11:30 a.m. And if anybody would want more information, the EO, HED number is 6177... Wow. 788-3610.
That was hot, huh?
It was hot.
Yeah. Blow those buckies up.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, the screen, not the screen, not a...
I forgot I could expand it.
He's crashing right into the ground. How about correspondence? Mr. Fralley, would you like to start?
Sure. Well, there was one very interesting email I got from a friend of mine. I was at work the other day, and my phone rang. It was Ms. Jean Fox, who was a former Selectman in Freetown. And now she's the project manager for the South Coast Rail of Mass DOT. And I've run into her at a number of different meetings over the years. And she means business. And she's sympathetic to our cause, because being a former Selectman. And apparently, one of the email trails that was going around Mass DOT from, that had my name on it, asking for them to please return a phone call or an email to us, we got it, and it came flying. She came across it and gave me a call and asked me what was going on with it. And I hadn't gotten any answers. And I responded, no. And she said, what do you mean? And I said, they haven't gotten back to us since the day they left this meeting, about anything. And so I went over some things. And she sent me this email about two minutes after that. And it certainly looks like we're finally going to get some movement and maybe a return phone call, quite possibly even a meeting. I'm cautiously optimistic with it. I certainly appreciate Ms. Fox's attention to our plight, I guess. I don't know what else you could call it. But this is the first positive feedback I've got from Mass DOT, like I said, since they walked out of this room in May. So I'm pretty happy about that. And we'll see what happens.
I was down at both of the rail crossings yesterday, yeah, yesterday. And they have put up some fencing. The one piece of fencing that they didn't put up, which I wish they would have, was the, there's a rock village church that has a daycare in it. And they have a little fence behind their property to the parking area. What they did is they put a bunch of boulders from the fence line out to where the gate control is. Which is good. That'll prevent cars from going through there. But kids and boulders, they're like, there's a natural attraction there. I wish they had put a fence there to block...
Well, maybe when we have that meeting, we can, you know, encourage them to go a little further with that.
And it does look like...
Or find out why they didn't do it there.
They have put some posts, some pretty significant size, six- or eight-inch Galvey posts in. It looks like they're going to put some type of a gate up to prevent people from driving down beside the tracks. It won't keep the people off the tracks. If they want to walk on the tracks or take their dirt bikes now or... I mean, there's only so much we can do. We can caution people to stay off the tracks, because you might get hit by a train. But I did like that, I read that letter from Jeanie, and it was, she's...
She's on it.
She shares our plight, because she did, she was a Selectman.
She understands.
She's dealt with a lot of that.
With that, just so we're all on the same page. I certainly share the concern about the daycare. But the Cape Flyer runs Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday. Most daycares run Monday through Friday, so...
Right now, it runs Friday night, Saturday.
Let's take care of what we have in front of us, rather than... And like I said, I'm certainly sympathetic to the issue. But I'm not sure that's, well, something we need to hop on quite yet. Let's just be nice and get a meeting. See how that goes, and then we can go from there.
Absolutely. Anything else?
That's all I had in correspondence.
Mr. Nolton?
Just number five. The minutes of the last Board of Trustees for the Public Library. I note that the curbing and sidewalk portions of the parking lot have been put out to bid. I'm just, I'm glad to see that there's some action happening with the parking lot there. As an avid patron myself, I'm looking forward to the completion of that parking lot.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Mr. Quell?
Well, going back to number one. You know, Alan, I again applaud your due diligence in staying on this and not going away. But finally, at least got a few pegs... in staying on this and not going away, but finally, at least got a few pegs further up the ladder. My concern is that somebody of, you know, her management level would be kept in the dark for so long. This stuff has been in the newspapers.
She's not, this isn't her area of expertise.
Oh, no, it's not her expertise.
It's not her project.
Sounds like...
South Coast Rail, I imagine, takes up quite a bit of her time.
I'm sure it does a lot of town.
I'm just happy she, she noticed us.
As am I, yeah. Like I said, I applaud your due diligence, I applaud her for getting back, but, you know, it sounds like the problem we were having just extends almost all to everybody. You know, you just, nobody wants to talk about it, nobody wants to get back to anybody, and it just, let's see if it just goes away, so hopefully this will get some traction. I do wanna point out, I think definitely number two deserves some, some comment. That's a pretty big bump in tonnage that we're now all set for and permitted for, is the way I read that, Charlie.
Well, actually...
We've gone from one, what, 172 metric tons a day, is that, to now we're permitted, what, 300 and something?
Right. What, what this refers to Ben is the, we have to go through a site assignment modification, which, which is a board of health activity, and actually, we're gonna be meeting with Waste Management and Jean Spalding and myself this week to go over the process that we have to follow. It's a fairly formalized process to modify their current site assignment for the landfill to account for the additional tonnage, and remember, the additional tonnage was something we agreed to as part of our deal with them, for them to take our future trash going forward after we, our CMS agreement ends in 2016. So, so all these, the, the references here are to the agreement that we made with Waste Management and was approved at town meeting back about a year ago.
So, the modifications and existing site assignments have been approved. Now it goes forward from there. So it is a major, I mean, it's, it's a big step or hurdle that's been overcome, is the way I'm looking at this. I mean, this has to be approved first, at least this day today.
Yeah, it's gotta, and Mass D E P has to agree, and what they're doing is they're agreeing with the, the overall scope of what has to be dealt with in the site assignment process. And that's what this document basically says, and now that we've got their concurrence, we can go ahead and proceed, well, with the site assignment hearings and, you know, approvals.
Well, that's a, that's a major bump in tons per day.
Yeah.
Because we've had a major bump in our population, which hopefully eventually we get back to Mass DOT that relates to our rotary. We've grown. Fix the rotary. So, just another, you know, clear sign that, you know, we've, we've got a lot of people here, a lot of cars, we've got a lot of things going on, and, you know, that, you know, just in a roundabout way of looking at that rotary and saying, "It's, it's time," because I know that's, that's the top of our list, which we'll be talking about next week. All right, thank you.
All right. And with the business?
Mr. Chairman, I forgot one, one thing in my report, that I did get contacted late last week from Mr. Jay Carney, representing Rainham Park. And I'll be meeting with him along with some of the staff on Wednesday, just to talk about impacts from the casino or the slot parlor here in Middleborough. So I'll keep you posted.
The slot parlor in Rainham?
In Rainham, exactly.
Don't, don't say casino and slot parlor in Middleborough.
I didn't say that. I hope I didn't imply it.
Hitchfork and Forge Brigade will be here in about 30 seconds, and they're all yours. Having no other business? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Before we go, we got our new town reports. They're beautiful. Okay. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
That's beautiful.